Okay, on recording or streaming live, to see now. We've got six minutes.
Uh, I know, it's been a bit. I get nervous because if there's an issue and it doesn't connect or something, then.
Oh, that's me.
So if I do it five minutes early, then I think gives me a little, a little room.
We're just talking how we're not big tech people.
How you're what?
We're not big tech people.
I, I.
We're the generation that's supposed to like tech, it'll be kind of grueling.
Well.
I still like paperless, I like to physically check it out.
I know, I think my brain is too.
Must be like it, must be like it.
Yes, yes, I work more, I work more now.
How are you wearing shorts?
Yeah, I'm wearing shorts.
Did you go home and take that lunch?
What do you take in the morning for lunch from the park? I was outside and then you were moved, look at a hot mess with my coffee, get my kids on the bus, and they're like trying to wear shorts and sweatshirt, I'm like, uh-uh, it is good to be outside. Did you wear flip flops in the winter too?
But I wore socks.
No, you didn't. I would make fun of them every chance I got for you, like just let me know how to be there.
That's like a thing these days though, isn't it?
I would want to fight him in the moment if he took the shoe.
Do you know, this date, ten years since then.
Because they're disgusting, I'm glad you survived though. The saddest part is that Rand just turned into, you know. Is that what you're hearing? Feel free to say that. That was funny, right?
I call to order the board trustees regular meeting for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is now six P M. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the invitation?
Yeah, I had to make, girl, thank you for this beautiful day, for the chance to meet freely in a country that we've created for us. Be with those who are, that watch out for us, that keep us safe, whether it be locally here, whether it be across the seas, and be with those families, ask to miss them when they're going, they're to be committed.
Please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. Corral. Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee McKee.
Here.
And fiscal officer Varian is excused. I move to adopt the agenda. Agenda as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
Yes, I had asked for two items and they had been ignored on this, discussion on solar. I had forwarded the board a information on Liberty Township who took up the solar exclusionary zone and actually passed that resolution. Your trustee Bill Bogans was going to come here and speak, but had no reply or input from that from the board. And then also asked for an update on the federal lawsuit against that township. It's been well over a year and I've been asking for repeated updates on that, and those have been withheld. Those have to be done in executive session, and I think it's critical that the full board be aware of all items, especially the legal actions against the township. So I'd like to move to add those two to the discussion, to the agenda, including a executive session for the update on the federal lawsuit against the township, and a discussion on the solar exclusion zone.
So Mr. Will Bogans, the gentleman from Liberty.
Need a second.
Oh, can I be?
I'll second.
Okay. Mister, since we're on the discussion, Mister Will Bogans from Liberty Township is a gentleman who up there recording, and he asked you not to post his quarter of the meeting up there? Is that the gentleman you were speaking of? I'm just trying to figure out the fact of the right person.
Number one, it's Bogans, and it's Liberty Township.
I'm saying to be correct, I know it's Liberty.
And I've had conversations with him, and he actually went to the commissioners and spoke to the commissioners about that.
Did he not ask you to post that? He told me it was too late to post, is the video?
A photo of the building, Liberty Township, the sign. What has this got to do with the township business?
I'm just asking.
Ms. McKee, this is so petty.
No, it's not, it's what you do, so.
Well, he said he was gonna, he wanted to be here, and he still may make it even though it's not on the agenda, but he did want to address the board and the president's mind.
Well, just so you know, Mister Evans, each township is different, and we are, it's not a cookie cutter when it comes to solar, okay? Board spoke on it a few meetings ago, and that's it.
So you need a vote on the motion, and whether you're going to.
If they don't discuss, then we'll take a vote on the motion to amend the agenda. To amend the agenda.
We're just in a discussion. Are you ready for a roll call?
We're ready for a roll call.
All right, this is a motion to amend the agenda. Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee McKee?
No.
Now you need a roll call for the agenda as presented. Roll call for the agenda, agenda as presented, please. Mister Evans?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
I move to adopt the minutes for the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I guess once again, these minutes do not properly reflect the business of the board. They whitewash the actions that were done, attempted, and discussions made. They do not properly reflect that, the true discussions that are melded in the video.
Ma'am, isn't it, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am, please, Mr. Hanson.
According to the twelfth edition of Robert's Rules of Order, section forty-eight, paragraph two, in an ordinary society, the minutes should contain mainly the record of what was done at the meeting and not what was said by the members. I just like to point that out in terms of Robert's Rules of Order.
And I could repeat Robert's rules on all motions made should be included in the minutes, and they are not, so we shouldn't pick and choose what rules we follow.
You got a second and a minute for discussion for the agenda, so that'll be on there.
Are you ready for a roll call? Roll call, please. Trustee Evans?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Pass to. Okay, we'll move over to the public comments. Please come up to the podium and please state your first, last name and address for the record.
Steve Perkins, seven three five two, Palmer Road. I'd like to just stand and off for a moment that we actually looked into Robert's rules for a minute. I've been advocating that for a long time, and, well, the point was brought up that, you know, maybe once again, parliamentary might be in order. As far as some other things, as far as solar goes, for example, Liberty Township is not Eton Township. It just isn't, the demographics are completely different there. I could easily stand up here and for the same reasons, somebody could say they were protecting Eton against solar, I could make the same case that I would protect Eton against avalanches. The reality is, is that Eton Township has almost nothing to offer solar on large scale in this township. It's just the nature of the makeup of the township as it is now. Twenty years ago, may have been a different story, today, just not the same. Additionally, if you're going to have a discussion about solar, which I have openly asked for, it should be on specific criteria as far as which solar you are talking about, not trying to take the largest version and trying to apply it where it doesn't actually belong. So I am still hoping to have that conversation. I have put out a call for that conversation, in which I have heard no response back, so I will leave it at that, and I appreciate your time.
There were four hundred ahead of me on that list, sir.
Hop up whenever you want to, sir. Thank you. You're welcome.
I like stand-up comedy a lot, I can do a lot of funny things.
Oh, my gosh. Thanks for the laugh.
Yeah, you're welcome. A little lemony and everything seems to make it work a little bit better. Hello, Ms. Hanson, how are you? You're a lawyer, correct?
Yes.
Okay, have you heard the term sophistry, is that correct? Have you heard that term?
Sophistry?
Sophistry, yes, in Chinese.
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Parker, four forty, Palmer Road. Oh, and before the base players on the website just want to come after me, I am a resident, I am a voter, just let I let you know. And I don't live in Columbus, or some other crazy place. I'm here because I'm concerned about our community. Okay, I got three minutes, okay? Sophistry is a legal term, and that's why I thought you might be familiar with it. And sophistry has a very specific meaning, and what it means is that somebody is intentionally trying to mislead, or they are so naive, what they think they are saying is true. I watched this happen on city council one night, our mayor was talking about housing development, and he was misleading the public, and I thought, you know what, either he's trying to mislead the public, or he's so naive, he doesn't know what he's talking about. It was going to hurt the community. So I bring this term up, sophistry, because it's an important thing. Number one, candidates are being appointed to the JED committee, boards, JEDs one and boards one, four, and seven tonight, were these positions advertised? And the reason I come here and asking this, because I was here two months ago and I asked the same question, if they'd advertised, there's a lot of great people in here, in this community that have accounting degrees, all kinds of stuff, it'd be good to interview that type of. Were these positions advertised?
No, sir.
Okay, were these candidates even interviewed?
Not there anymore, I don't even know who they are.
Okay, are there minutes or notes available from the interviews to be reviewed, are these minutes, for these candidates are interviewed? I'm going to get to my point here in just a moment, okay? Where were they conducted? Were they conducted here, are there cameras here that we can look at and see? That's another thing, where were they conducted? Do these candidates meet any predetermined qualifications? Do we have qualifications for people going to meet on these JED boards and JED committees that are going to be, they're going to be talking about millions of dollars? So you'd think they'd have to have some minimum qualifications, okay? Handpicking board members may be expeditious because it makes it easy, but the results will not garner the best, most qualified candidates, okay? With property tax bills just being sent out, and they're the highest core reported values, families are being forced to make cuts in their own spending, it's incumbent that we place the best candidates to help this community with their individual tax burdens. We need to do the best we can here, on these committees, on all committees, water boards, et cetera, everything. Do these appointments put people in positions of conflict of interest? Because maybe they, these people that we're putting in there, do they have some land that they're going to be, you know, is there a conflict of interest that they're going to be doing? Very, very important stuff here, and, so let me get back on track here, I've lost my place there a little bit, just to have a context, okay? This is no longer about petty squabbles and gains of residence, this is about cronyism, placing people in government, and in today's economy, we can't do this, we can't do it. We need to get the best people, we need to interview for people for these, okay? As a trustee leaves a position, and six meetings in town, you know, and it sets a tone for how they will be remembered, you'll be remembered as a trustee. No one remembers people when they arrive, but they have the ability to be known as inclusive and not divisive if they move on, on the twilight of their tenure. I knew a state representative that was, he was called a lackey by the other state representatives, they called him a lackey. They called this guy a lapdog, but the worst term they called him was called a back venture. What a back venture was, he would show up at the state.
Sorry, sorry, three minutes, thank you.
We got to be fair to everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody who'd like to have a copy of this, I'll have it available for you, because I have, the next few paragraphs really hit the ball out of park, I'm sorry, I was wrong with it.
Teresa DeShawn, worrying for Trail West, to add on to his information on a JED, applications, or applications taken for these positions that are going to be appointed for. If so, what would they ask for? Old business that's not on the agenda. Maybe we're going to get updates from NIDA, but, you know, the final cost of the fireworks, what is the final cost when you include extra deputy time, fire department time, any extra people that were there, the cost for the giveaways, how much was donated from other people, how much was the actual final cost to Eton Township? Anytime we have a big public, thing like that, there should be a final accounting on the cost. Update on modern sewer expansion on Wagon Road, do we have an update? That should be in our old, you know, business that, have they met to discuss costs again? Are they going to start, or do they wait for funding to start? Under, I would like it to have the township reevaluate the exclusionary zones, businesses cross township borders, households cross township borders. So, yes, we may not have two hundred and fifty acres together in Eton Township, but what's to say part is going to be in Eton Township, part in another community? So I would like that further discussed and looked at, because Licking County's already going to be looking at Liberty Township, it'll save them time and energy if they look at both of us together, rather than looking separately. And then, the other thing I just want to look at is, are we going to be having at open house, a meet the candidates night before the election? Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you enjoy the fireworks?
I did, you know, I didn't go to the clubhouse, I saw them from Button Bush, and they were a lot better on that end.
Judy Caffmeyer, twenty-nine, Royal Court. Two weeks ago, I spoke to this assembly, reminding the trustees that the issue of banning large solar net in the township was not a dead issue, that other Licking County townships and neighboring counties had taken notice and were engaged in preserving their sacred farmland and the quality of life for their citizens. I had no idea that within the next few days, I would be witnessing Liberty Township approving an exclusionary zone resolution for their residents. Good for them, and that resolution is now in the hands of our Licking County commissioners, who must decide how to proceed for the benefit of rural Licking County, and perhaps themselves in an upcoming election year. With this new development, I hope our trustees reconsider their previous decision and take a second look. In my closing, I ask whether a tax reassessment was in the future for Licking County. When I checked my mail on September sixth, there it was, a love letter from Michael L. Smith, with a property about reevaluation and soon to be tax increase. If I didn't know better, I might think that I had prescient powers. And just a reminder that the conservatives of Central Ohio, that meeting is Thursday evening at six thirty, Touchdown Club on Thirtieth Street and Heath. A group from Knox County is sharing their experiences about solar companies and the hush agreements they've encountered. Next month, Hartford Township will follow up, but more information at the Trap Club in Newark. And although we might not agree on all issues, I hope that we are clear that Ohio does not need to codify murder in its constitution. A no vote is essential in November, and I have yard signs for anyone who might be interested. See you afterwards.
So, you have a.
Gary Merkle, or two five four, Trail East. I too would like to see the Eton Township Board reconsider industrial solar and exclusionary zone on that, and that's over fifty megawatts, anything under fifty megawatts, the Eton Township zoning commission is already, it's my understanding, have forwarded text to the county prosecutor, I don't know if that's back, and then it would go on to the Licking County Planning Commission before it comes back to Eton Township trustees. I think we need to be proactive, not reactive. The second item is Scannell. Scannell still has not complied with the Licking County subdivision regulations, it's been over a year since that violation, which was sent out August first, twenty twenty-two, and we still have no updates regarding the moving of the wall, or the correction of the wall. And that's an Eton Township zoning issue, not a subdivision issue with Licking County planning. My third concern, which I expressed at the last meeting, is the Wagon Sewer Plant has gone up from twenty-five million to eighty-four million now, and the repeated request at the Water and Sewer District, there are no details whatsoever on how that's going to be funded. Let me back up a little, the detail we do have is if they're going to take a loan, but when we ask how that loan is going to be repaid, and that loan is going to be applied through the Ohio Water Development Authority, we never get any details, and we don't get any details from our elected officials here at the township either. This is a major issue on how that's going to be funded, is it going to be on the backs of the school districts and the taxpayers, or is it going to be on the backs of the developers where it should be? Thank you.
Ryan Davis, eight eight oh seven, Watkins Road. I would just like to speak about time. I'm looking at the agenda, I do see some timely items, the resolutions like October first, et cetera, that's something that needs to be discussed this meeting. Trick or treaters, obviously, that needs to be discussed, I'm kind of surprised we haven't said that yet, but the other items on the agenda, I just don't see a lot of reasoning why they're being discussed tonight. There's several other issues that have been on the board's agenda, have not been picked back up, you know, why are these important tonight? You know, the JED board, are they due to be assigned in September? I don't know. I'm hoping the board kind of shares with the public more information on the process to how we got to here, why the people are getting appointed, you know, why this is best for Eton. It's in the interest of time that the residents know tonight, or be informed on how they can get the information themselves, because otherwise, there's residents like myself, they're going to get up here and ask questions that don't get clear answers, or don't get answers at all sometimes, and it's just not fair, because it's in the interest of time that we know that our trustees are working behind the scenes, on their own projects, to bring the information to the board, so the board can have a thorough discussion, make an accurate and proper decision, so, thank you very much.
Jonathan Ard, one oh seven eight five, Palmer Road. Where do you start? Oh, I'd like to have an update on our rusty door condition, how the progress has gone on that. If you stop my clock while I wait for the answer. I have, I have, I have forty years' experience in maintenance, and I'm not sure how old this building is, but with these doors, if they are rusting, I think that should be a manufacturer problem, and might want to look at that, they might replace them for you, since you're an exposed government building. A good maintenance man can cover a lot of fields of service, and maybe we ought to hire a maintenance man for Eton Township that would work with the crew, the road crew, so if there's not, you know, a thing going on road crew, they could do maintenance on the building. We've got enough buildings here that a maintenance man probably could, you know, finish it pretty good, but it could be a joint position, where there'd be the supervisor of the road crew that, you know, is a maintenance man that does mechanical work, service work on the vehicles and things like that. I think the township would get, you know, good benefits from that, plus they could keep up with the rusty doors. Solar farm issue, you know, I've been to all these meetings and all this solar show, and the most, the loudest voice on this issue is people that live in town or in the housing development. I don't hear any farmer or any landowner, people that own land, coming up and, you know, voicing concerns about solar farms. It's the people that don't have land, don't have the investment, want to control those folks that do have it, so that's my issue with that. This young man that spoke about all the positions and getting the right person for the right job, we might not have got what we paid for on our last election, so this election, we'll see how that works out too, but did we get the right candidates for the positions? The last of citizens. Did we get some money in here that can handle millions, millions of dollars of our checking account, our money? Maybe not by their past experience, they might not have been the best candidate. So, you know, that's what I'm saying, the candidates are running now, are they standing up and telling the voters the truth about their self? It didn't take long for McKee to find out who she ran with, it didn't take her very long at all, see how that turned out, so, just, you know, hopefully all you guys will be truthful about what you support.
Three minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, mister.
Three minutes.
No problem, thank you, just put that thought out there.
Thank you, sir.
Check your addresses too, make sure. Check your addresses too, make sure who lives in who that.
So, any other comments tonight?
All righty, well, I guess I'll turn the meeting over to our administrator, Ms. Hanson, please.
May I possibly go to Tony?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, forgive me for having my back to you, but I'll try to scan the room. So I want to start with a reminder that there's only 93 days until Christmas.
Oh, thanks, Anita.
Consider that.
Thanks for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better now? Okay. 93 days till Christmas, did you get that? Um, I wanted to start with some information related to zoning. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the building that we all refer to as the Ice House. It has been the topic of discussion and the topic of action as well. Most recently, at John Singleton's urging, the fire department inspected the property, and a notice of violation for unsafe structure either has been or will be issued on, to the property owner, requiring that all doors and windows be secured and remain so. I know our deputies are keeping a close watch on the property, and we will continue to stand top of the situation and report as events require, or if you would have questions. The zoning commission has been working on revising the wording of our zoning resolution for approximately one year. The commission was working on revising the NAICS codes for general business, local business, and accommodation business districts. Those revisions were set aside while the commission moved its focus to Article 10 to primarily address solar farm issues. A draft of revised Article 10 has been submitted to the Licking County Planning Commission for its non-binding recommendation. A public hearing before the zoning commission on the Article 10 amendments is scheduled for September 26th. After that hearing, the zoning commission will make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve the amendments. The trustees will then conduct their own public hearing. Once that process is complete, the commission will return its attention to Article 9 and the NAICS codes. Um, there was, at some point, several meetings ago, discussions about flooding that were ha, that was happening over at Lakeland Hills. We had a great meeting at Lakeland Hills that included the county engineer and a member of his staff. Licking County Solid Water had two representatives present, the township was represented, the HOA and other residents, and a plan was developed that included some work that the township will be doing in, in, by right of way, and drainage work that will be done by the HOA. It is expected that the work will resolve the issues related to the flooding in that area. As to the micro litigation, you may recall that a dispute arose over a used variance and a rezoning application for the property at 9616 Main Street. And before there, let me allay any concerns that there may be, all of the information that I'm going to relay is part of a public record. So, there's nothing that needs to be discussed about the status of this litigation that would require discussion in executive session. Instead, I can give this report that everyone can hear. In April of 2022, Consuela and Leroy Oliver filed a lawsuit against the township after their request for a used variance to construct multifamily dwellings in a GB1 district on Main Street was denied. The existing land use is residential slash general business. They sought to construct 20 apartment units on the site. The surrounding land uses are GB1. The Olivers also filed an application to have the parcel rezoned from GB1 to medium-low-density residential district, or R2. That application was withdrawn by the Olivers before any determination could be made by the township. For the first time in the complaint that they filed in federal court, the Olivers alleged that the proposed housing was to be affordable housing that they claimed would have been occupied by minorities. Nowhere in their zoning documents do they inform the township that the housing sought to be built was intended as affordable. The Olivers claim that the denial was racially motivated by the removal of R3 multifamily residential district, the denial of this particular multifamily housing, and due to the fact that they are people of color. The lawsuit's pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ho, of Ohio. Through our insurance, the township is being defended by Reminger, a Columbus lover. On August 21st, 2023, Reminger filed a motion for summary judgment, asking the court to grant judgment in the township's favor on all claims asserted by the plaintiffs. Plaintiffs claim that removal of multifamily housing dispar, disparately, dis, disparately, impacts racial minorities. Plaintiffs offer no proof of their stated allegations. Plaintiff's equal protection claims as relates to the used variance fails, since there is no other instance that similarly situated developments in the township were treated any differently than those made by the plaintiffs. The township attorneys argue that the property has over 450 permitted land uses. The property owners have not provided any evidence that the property has declined in value, let alone that it has declined in value based on any township conduct. The denial of the used variance was ra, was racially related to the legitimate interest in living urbanization and preserving rural aesthetic. The Oliver's response to the motion is due next month. The township will then have an opportunity to reply in support of its motion. I will stay in contact with our attorneys and report as matters progress, but please understand that even after the motion is fully briefed, it may ten, pend with the court for months.
Yeah.
The only, um, the only discovery that was conducted prior to our attorney's filing a motion asking the court to rule in our favor was written discovery, gathering of documents and some written questions, there were no depositions taken. I reported at the last meeting that the JEDZ boards have jointly committed to reimburse the township up to $650,000 for the resurfacing of Etna Parkway and Heritage Drive. In addition, we have received the second quarter distribution from each of the JEDZs, totaling just over $216,000, and Southwest Licking Schools received a total for the second quarter of just over $193,000. I attended the September 11th Girl Licking County CIC board meeting. Thus far this year, there have been 75 project leads and 51% response from those leads. There have been seven company visits, 250 jobs have been created in the county, 85% of the leads, I thought this, these were interesting statistics, 85% of the leads are from manufacturing. 50% of, of those are EV battery-related, and another 25% renewable energy. The limitations and considerations in the county in general are the increasing number of chemical manufacturing project leads for the EV battery semiconductor supply chain leads, high water and wastewater users, and high contiguous acreage requirements. Those things are a challenge to some of the project leads, most of the project leads that have come through Girl Licking County. The next board meeting for Girl Licking County is in November. After some delay, our, um, due to our design engineer having some personal health issues, the park committee is scheduled to meet on October 5th at 6:00 PM. So, I'll be reporting mid Oc, the mid-October meeting on, um, on that committee meeting. I attended the Licking County TID trustees meeting on September 13th. As he does every month, Bill Locher gave a report on all pending projects, including our Pike Street project and the Recugee Road main and a Parkway improvements. There was extended discussion about the funds that were made available by the state of Ohio, which are separate and apart from the $20 million that has been designated to the Licking County Commissioners. Here's a funny story, when I was sitting there, I was sitting behind Commissioner Bub, and he had this envelope, and they were talking about this 20 million, and he said, "Here, I'm going to give it to Mrs. Hanson." And he handed me this envelope. It, it really wasn't $20 million.
It was nice.
No, it wasn't. He didn't give me $20 million, he gave me a play. Uh, let's see where that, okay. Uh, there was a discussion at the meeting of the nine local road projects that are related to Intel, of which a little over $50 million has been funded. Traffic congestion at 310 and 40 is being studied in partnership with, with the TID and ODA, so there'll be more coming out, more information on that as that traffic study continues. The West Licking Development CIC will meet on September 20th to further discuss business of the CIC related to its winding down and recording obligations. I wanted to give you an important legislative update. I attended a meeting of the Coalition of Large Ohio Urban Townships, which is an Ohio Township Association Board. There was discussion of the Ohio Senate Select Committee on Housing, which was formed late last month. Senator Michelle Reynolds chairs the committee. Ohio Senate President Matt Huffman announced the creation of the new Senate Select Committee on Housing. He said, "Homeownership is a cornerstone of building a strong financial foundation for Ohio families." This committee will hold hearings to learn what additional steps the state can take to encourage homeownership while removing barriers that entrepreneurs encounter as they work to revitalize our neighborhoods. The committee members include Vice Chair Senator Terry Johnson, Senator Blue Blessing, Senator Andrew Brenner, and Senator Herschel Craig, in addition to Michelle Reynolds, who is the chair. Senator Reynolds is quoted as saying, "Ohio has a growing workforce with housing needs. It is essential that we prepare and learn how to foster smart residential development so that many people can participate in the American dream of homeownership." The committee has two more hearings in Columbus, then it will hold the rest of the hearings on the road in different parts of the state. The next hearing in Columbus is scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 PM. Now, so why is this important? Why did this sort of breeze to the point of discussion? Well, it's because there is growing concern about top-down zoning regulations that are being offered as a solution by this committee. The message that is being driven by development groups is that because each county has their own regulations, and there's no uniformity in zo, in zoning, it's hard to build homes. It is expected that the Senate committee will push for the counties to take over all zoning for housing development. Failing that, it is expected that the legislature will push for that control top-down to be with the state of Ohio. It's important for us to express our views to this select committee that has been formed to, that we want to keep our own zoning. We don't want that to be handled by the county, and we certainly don't want it handled by the state of Ohio. Mr. Stepp is traveling for business and is unable to be with us this evening, but he provided a report for the month of July. He did intend to be present for this meeting, but he was called away and expects to be at our next meeting. The district issued bonds for a land purchase for property across Rappin Coon Creek for future development of a water and or wastewater treatment facility as demand dictates. The district paid cash for the property and subsequently entered into a loan agreement to reimburse the district. It is anticipated that JED funds from Development and Jersey Township will cover all debt service for this loan. The new committee, the new community authority will meet on September 20th. At that meeting, it is expected that the NCA will sign a resolution permitting the repayment to the township of the out-of-pocket expenses incurred by the township in connection with amounts expended by the township to establish the NCA and to provide for its ongoing administration. The township will have to submit a request for payment of the expenses accompanied by a certification that the expenses were incurred, but it would be my expectation that that would be a fairly seamless process, um, working with our fiscal officer to make that happen. We had our first all-hands meeting on September the 8th. The purpose of the meeting was to enhance productivity of the entire team as we become more cohesive. We had nearly 100% participation. One road crew member was at a family funeral, and one trustee elected not to participate, but we learned a lot from each other. We provoked good discussion about how we can make our team stronger and better. We considered the following traits and why each trait is important for a strong, functioning team to be at its best. The first trait was to believe, accomplish what is collectively believed to be possible. We must be greater than all the advers, adversity and negativity that we face. We need to believe in each other, fill each other with positive energy and encouragement, which makes the team better and each person better. Challenges are opportunities for greatness. In that regard, we have many opportunities for greatness in Etna Township.
Yes.
The second trait was ownership. Take responsibility for your choices, your words and your actions. Don't blame others, look at yourself, don't make excuses. Failure refines, it does not define who we are. The third trait was connection. Connection leads to commitment. Share who we are, our struggles, our challenges, and our successes. Make time to have meaningful conversations and listen to each other. Connections build trust, not pride or ego. The fourth characteristic was love. Leaders love and care about their committed team. Love creates a stronger team, which will work harder and sacrifice more. Love leads to trust, which leads to commitment, which leads to sacrifice. Love drives a team to succeed. The fifth trait was inclusion. Each member must feel like they are part of the team. It's a good feeling when you contribute and are recognized in value for who you are and your contribution. Each member feels more connected to the team and its outcomes if everyone's contribution is valued. The sixth characteristic was consistency. Don't let emotions, fears, or doubts affect our effort. Give your best effort every day. Consistently, consistency creates excellence. Consistency in both attitude and habits creates excellence. The last characteristic was hope. Always remain hopeful. Hope is for the future. We brainstorm how to make any individual stick unbreakable, and determine that the only way this, the sticks are unbreakable is when they are bundled together. As a bundle, they are strong and unbreakable. Personally, I'm looking forward to future meetings. I have received a number of inquiries related to the use of the township's Zoom account. Although I've asked several times, Mr. Evans has not provided the, the login credentials for the account. I also asked the fiscal officer, who had the credentials at one time, but cannot now locate them. She told me that she also asked Mr. Evans to give her the credentials. I'm at a loss about what is needed to obtain this information. Do we need a motion from the board requiring Mr. Evans to provide the necessary information within seven days?
So, move.
Okay, let's address this. Ms. Hanson, you just appeared.
I need a second.
Give her a second. Is this a report, because there's...
Well, she just made a motion.
I asked a question.
Yeah, I just made a motion.
And Mrs. McKee made a motion.
Is there a second?
I say arrest him. All seconds.
Just a second, it's a longer discussion.
Yeah. All passwords have been provided to the fiscal officer. The password that I got for the garage security video that the prior contractor refused to provide was given to the fiscal officer as required. I, Miss, Ms. Hanson, I'm speaking, I'm speaking. Ms. Hanson, Ms. Hanson, I'm speaking. I have the floor. All passwords I have, my email, Zoom, everything is with the fiscal officer as it should be, okay? All requests for anything Zoom has been provided by public records. Now, Ms. Varian has asked for Ms. McKee's password for the cell phone to provide public records, and she has refused. So this is wholly inappropriate. Ms. Varian has the password. Ms. Varian was provided the password, and she has the password.
And that she had asked you to give it to me. Have you since given it back to her?
She has the password.
Does she have the password? Stay within the last five days.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I gave it to her.
I suppose I can, you know, get it then from Ms. Varian.
I mean, this is a circus. This is an absolute circus. Mrs. McKee refuses to provide passwords for cell phones for security and I do what's right, giving every password to Ms. Varian. Ms. Hanson, that's inappropriate.
Trustee Evans, roll call.
For what?
She made a motion that you're supposed to provide it within seven days. Roll call.
Yes, because I already... She has...
Trustee Johnson.
This is a circus. Can we have the password for Ms. McKee's cell phone?
Password. You'd ask for the...
Ms. McKee said that she's obtaining the records from the team all and wanting them.
And I provided the records from Zoom and my emails and everything.
I did the counter invite, so that's correct. Okay. The township is provided emergency management services by the Licking County Emergency Management as outlined in its emergency operations plan. As part of the services provided by Licking County EMA, anyone can register for weather alerts, kind of like the AMR alerts that will come to your phone. And you can register for which type of alerts you want to receive. You just go to lickiccounty.gov/depts, Departments, forward slash EMA, and click on Ready LC. Now, I would tell you, I did a Google search for Ready LC to see if it was an easier way to tell you to find it, but it came up with other themes. And so if you want to email me, I'm happy to give you the link. Or if you go to the Licking County Emergency Management website, and then you'll see in green letters right in the middle, Ready LC. Lieutenant Carson has taken delivery of the two Dodge Durandos. When Julie gets back, I'll work with her to pay the invoice to Codlin, which has already been approved. Lieutenant Carson is going to let us know as the other equipment is received. And so hopefully, maybe before the end of the year, we'll have our new cruisers. Okay, if anyone has... I'll close my report as I normally do. If anyone has any issues or concerns, please reach out to me.
Are you have questions?
My email is nanson@ednat township.com. My township cell is seven four zero eight one four nine three six five. Or you can always call me here at Town Hall, seven four zero nine two seven 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 one seven.
I have a couple of questions to follow up. The West-Licking CIC, what is the time and place of that? I asked you previously, and you refused to provide that.
Mr. Evans, I've never refused to provide you any information.
But you have that information?
I think I said in my report. I have to look it up now. It's going to be on September the twentieth. The time... I'll have to look it up.
And the place. If you could give me the time and place.
It will be here at Town Hall.
Regarding Grohlicking County, you mentioned project lead, and that was for the county.
Correct.
What are the metrics for the township? We pay fifteen thousand a year, and I see a lot of leads coming through that aren't responded to. We had one that was a pencil manufacturer, writing implement manufacturer. There are a lot that I think would benefit, but I don't think we're using that. So do you have metrics on that?
Well, I'm not aware of any leads that have been sent to us that have not been followed up on. There was one lead that came to us through Grohlicking County that was going to be down, right down on the other side. But it was... It had caustic fumes. And so it was too close to the neighborhood that's back behind, so...
Could you just get the metrics for what we've actually done in... The number of leads, in Edna Township?
On what period of time?
This year. And then regarding the lawsuit, the reason for the updated lawsuit wasn't to acquire publicly available information. I mean, we knew all that before, but it was to speak to our attorneys and to see what the case was, what their feeling was, what they're doing, because it's not been a board action. We've never been updated on this, and as a party to this, it should be a board decision. We should all be updated. And that's where the need for the executive session is. Because it's not just one board member that should be directing this of how it's going to be attacked, because that's what attorneys do. Attorneys just don't do what they want. They're directed by the clients in consultation with the insurer and all that, and that hasn't been done for well over a year. And that's why I'm asking for an executive session with our attorneys.
Well, all I can tell you, Mr. Evans, is that I called. They gladly took my call. I assume they would gladly take your call as well. The issues are purely legal issues. They are not factual questions, which is why it makes it admissible for a motion for summary judgment, which is a motion that asks the court to rule in our favor based on the law when there are no factual issues in dispute. And so there have... There's not been really anything... Like, that's what I said about the discovery. The written discovery was done. I mean, there are no strategic issues that would be appropriate for executive session.
Filing the summary motion would be... Everybody files a summary motion saying there's nothing to...
Not always.
Most of the time.
No, not always.
But I think...
It has to be noted, there has to be no... There has to be no dispute of fact.
I'll continue to ask for...
And I would like to point out, that's the first time I've been asked for an update in the almost six months I've been with the township.
That's right. That's right.
I've asked for many last...
I'm just saying now, since I've been here.
We're moving forward now. No, no. Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess we'll move over to the business. Resolution twenty-three oh nine one nine zero one to declare October first to October seventh, twenty twenty-three, as a stormwater awareness week. Is there a second? You got your information there. Should be able to go with it. Second. Discussion?
So just so you're aware of what this is, Soil and Water asked us to participate along with many of the governmental entities across the state of Ohio to declare the first week of October as Stormwater...
Stormwater. Yep, Stormwater Awareness Week.
Sort of Stormwater Awareness Week, just to kind of raise it up in everyone's view. So that's how it came about.
Right. Roll call.
Yes, roll call, please.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you. I move to authorize the expense not to exceed five hundred dollars plus parking for myself, Rosal McDee, Nita Hanson, Don Copley, and John Singleton to attend the MORPSY Summit on Sustainability on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Madam Cusman, may I?
Yes, please.
So I would just say that we probably should appropriate a specific amount for the parking as opposed... And I think the five hundred dollars would cover the cost for the four of us to attend. And so what I could find out about the parking is that maybe as much as thirty dollars. It may be as little as twelve dollars. So it might be better to appropriate up to six hundred dollars. That should give plenty of money to set aside for parking. Just a suggestion.
Okay, so Julie, with our fiscal officer, would just kind of put like a blanket of six hundred dollars and then whatever we don't use, it eventually go back into the...
Perfect.
Is this why I called?
So this is an environmental conference that is put on by MORPSY. It's going to be downtown at the Hilton, near the convention center. MORPSY expects hundreds of community leaders to explore and share sustainable solutions and ideas. There are two plenary sessions, and then there are breakout sessions that will discuss things like pollution, safeguarding water, transportation policy in the environment, cleaner air, walk and ride, clean energy. There's just lots of topics. And the fee for attendance is one hundred and twenty-five dollars per person.
Thank you.
Will we be private cleaner if you just... If you and Jeff agree on your motions to modify your five hundred... Oh, modify to six hundred. I'm sorry. Mr. Evans, is it okay if you want to sit?
To increase it to six hundred?
Ready for roll call, please. Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Pass.
We'll move over to the JED one board appointment, JED C one board appointments. As we know, there's three openings on those JED appointments. And the ones that we were looking to, that put back on the board, would be Mr. John Carlisle, which was there before his term was up. So I'm asked to... I moved to appoint Mr. John Carlisle with experience, lots of experience, to the board, as well as Nicole Washington, which is now the chair of the other.
Would you just... And then we do your question, and you just make a question about that.
I just moved to put John Carlisle, Nicole Washington, and myself to the JED C one board, and Jim Duffy as an alternate for the term October first, twenty twenty-three, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
And I just want to make a note that there was a typo on the agenda's twenty twenty-five.
That's correct. Twenty twenty-five.
First, I'd like to know why there's no resolution to this. There's a resolution for the JEDs. But also, why are we continuing to not advertise, be transparent, be inclusive of everyone in this township instead of self-appointed, instead of appointing friends, and appointing allies? It's cronyism, definition, to the T. And it's... We have residents that have spoken up that want to serve. Other ones, on the rare occasion that they have been advertised, have applied. And I was not informed that there were three board appointments up. I was not informed any of the people that were going to be considered. There's no information being provided to this board, at least to me. But more importantly, not to the residents. The residents should know what's going on here and have the opportunity to serve. But to put John Carlisle back on there is wholly inappropriate.
Why?
He was the one that led to the West-Licking CIC to defund with the Secretary of State. Why would you put an individual on the board again that would do that? So this cronyism needs to stop. I move to table this and advertise these appointments, interview people, and select the best from the township to serve. We didn't second it?
Oh, it's a motion to table. It was a motion to...
Which I think is really a motion plus con.
Correct.
Okay, now you're back to discussion on the real issue.
I mean, I hope the residents of this township are watching.
Oh, I hope so.
Because the decisions are important that are going to be made this November to continue this or to get the change that was voted for in two thousand twenty-one. We need to end the impropriety. We need proper administration. And how does one trustee know that you have the best if you haven't talked to the residents? I know many that would fill those shoes. They have no opportunity to apply. It's dictated. Believe me, I've talked to Mr. Carlisle, and it was quite the conversation for forty-five minutes.
You ready for roll call? Roll call. Trustee Evans?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Pass. Two to one.
I will move over to the JED one, four, and seven. I move to appoint myself to the JED one position four for the term of August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to August twenty...
That's my resolution. The JED board had done my resolution. JED C is that motion. You have a resolution.
Sorry. Sorry about that.
That's all. And it's resolution two.
Two. Resolution twenty-three oh nine one nine zero two to move to develop the District one, position four, four position, and seven, position two. Appoint myself, Rosal McDee, as well as John Kennard to the JED four, position four, for the term of August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven. And John Kennard to JED seven for the term from August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. I mean, discussion?
Clarify, JED one, the four position is you.
Correct.
And the JED seven, position two, is you. Correct?
No, John Kennard is to JED four, position four.
Yeah.
And then he's both to JED seven. John Kennard.
Okay. All right. That's what I'm...
Those are just the ones that are for reelection. The other ones don't expire.
Discussion?
All right. Again, these should be advertised, interviewed, and allow the residents to serve instead of, again, self-appointed, which is, I think, the worst part of this, to think someone has to be on every board. And then also appoint their supporters without any option for anybody else in this community to serve. And then also, has anybody actually read this resolution?
Yes.
It's missing section four. Section five and six is a repeat of the text section. It looks like it's not proper.
What is?
It's proper to have it missing the section? Section three to section five, and section five is verbatim of the further resolved part. But things aren't read on this board. It's just passed and shoved through.
That's not true. That's not true, Mr. Evans.
I've got it right here.
I can read it for those sections. That's not funny. Thank you, Mr. Evans, for pointing that out. Appreciate it.
Proper due diligence is not done in this township. Transparency is not done in this township.
That resolution came from someone from before.
Yeah. Right. So these are the most... Right, so these are the motions before, that's right.
I only changed section one.
Right, I remember. So that comes more.
So I moved to table this so proper legal review can be done on the resolution.
I was just saying that that it would have been helpful to have comments related to type of radical errors in advance of the meeting so they could have been corrected in advance of the meeting rather than point them out in public. That's.
And that's why I say this should be provided to the board well prior, not the day before. Not the day before.
I think Mr. Evans just made a motion to T. all the jet one, four, seven resolution.
Right, for proper legal review of the resolution because it's not.
I was making sure she realized to make the ask.
Oh, yeah, there's a second.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Roll call.
Trustee Evans?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
And I will renumber that, but.
Okay, I'll make one.
Well, point of order, how can we pass this resolution?
The renumbering is just a typo.
It's typo.
How will this renumber?
This came from a legal.
There's nothing to do.
Correct.
And it wasn't our legal.
Let's try. Trick or treat, let's go down to trick or treat. I move to set trick or treat for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three from six P M. to eight P M. Is there a second?
I'll second, is this the same time as the task?
Yes, it is.
All right, very good.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Pass.
I move to authorize myself to sign Ross McKee to sign the Columbia Gas of Ohio Certified Retail Natural Gas Supplier Customer Information Agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, this is going to release the customer information to the aggregator, Treble. We, if you remember the discussion I had with the representative that I thought it was inappropriate that they get these lists and they will put people back into the aggregation program when they've already opted out. And he said that he wasn't concerned about it or some some effect of that. I'm concerned that, again, people who have opted out of this are going to be put back in, causing them to have to opt out once again. Is that going to be done or is that not going to be done? Ms. McKee, since you put this forward.
Right, right. They can opt out, just like you would do like.
They've already opted out, but this would put put them back in it. I think once somebody opts out, they should stay out of the ballot.
Yes, that's not.
Does does the back end are late? So we have a new agreement, we just have a new agreement, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you have a new agreement, so are those people that are opting back in for the new agreement? Is that what we're doing or?
At the beginning of the new agreement, everyone was opted in. Then everyone who opted out remained opted out. This is a certification related to that agreement that these are the zip codes within the township.
They're giving the list to be able to opt people back in, I believe. That's why they wanted the list for the electric before the Ms. McKee signed on her own to opt people back in. And that's my concern.
That's a true statement that they're actually opting them back.
That's what they said, they're they're rep set off. They're rep set off. I raised that concern now. No, not with the new agreement, it's for those that previously opted out, they said. Whenever they do this.
This is a new agreement, this is.
This is just from Columbia Gas to verify zip codes.
This this is Archer Energy, which is the Treble supplier.
But what they want us to sign is to verify zip codes.
It doesn't have any in time. People who are opted out are opted out. They might get a letter that says he, you want to opt in, you can opt in anytime you want. Because people can opt in and opt out whenever they want. This will not automatically opt people back in that have opted out.
This is, this is not verification emails, this is the governmental aggregation eligible customer list. So they're seeking a list of customers that are not within the aggregation program. They're not just verifying zip codes.
They're asking us to verify the zip codes within the township.
You ready for a roll call, Ms. McKee?
Please roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Pass three to one. I'm sorry, two to one.
The Southgate Company Limited Partnership is dedicating right of way Venture Drive to Etten Township. In order to defer the C A U V recruitment charges on the conversation of one point two six two acres of the roadway, the township needs to submit an application to defer the recruitment charges on land converted from agriculture use. I move to authorize myself Ross McKee to submit the application to defer recruitment charges on land converted from the agricultural use for one point two six two acres roadway for Venture Drive. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
I was just providing this information, so I do have a couple of questions. They are dedicating, giving over the township that planned for that road. Are we required to take that and then maintain it in the future, causing us additional expenses? Or is this some something outside some developmental agreement?
This came from the prosecutor's office, Mr. Evans, and this is just for me to convert the agriculture use to sign this charge as land converted and I'm.
But that doesn't answer my question, so are are we obligated to take it? Is it part of development? Is, are are we responsible for the future road expenses?
The the Venture Drive dedication is done through the commissioner's office by petition and that's a separate issue that I just, Baba, have you been out yet to to do the viewing on Venture Drive? This is from, this request was from the Agriculture District. The Venture Drive dedication, that's something between the commissioners.
But my.
This is just, this was just requested from the lady at the C A U V department so that we can bring, we don't have to get the back taxes on the C A U V if the road is dedicated to the township.
I understand to confirm that, but my question is, are we obligated to take this road as a part of the development plan? Is it, because many times I've heard it from other officials, they're surprised that the roads within the park are public and it's then at our expense. So is this a road that we need to take on? I mean, if there's been prior agreement, i- it just doesn't seem like there's any information on that. Just because it comes from a prosecutor doesn't mean anything. Do you not have that information?
Mr. Evans, to answer your specific question, we've not yet been presented with any request for us to take the town the road. If I knew that you needed this information, I could have had it prepared and been ready for this meeting. But this is a sort of a preempt, it's related to Venture Drive, but it's that process has not yet been started.
This is just for me to sign off on it and.
But. But if if the process hasn't been to take the road on and we haven't decided, well, this is what she said.
No, I believe the commissioners had petition from Southgate to turn over Venture Drive, but I don't know that it's been on the way through.
It's not, it's just not anything I see, so I don't know.
We think this was a part of the discussion, they just asked us to do the C A U V.
Well, that's not what Ms. Hanson said, she said it was.
But I'm not aware of it.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to say is that it doesn't seem.
Know that you had these questions, but I wasn't.
The lady spoke with me that called from the office, they didn't talk to me.
The only information I got is Venture Drive and that's my concern, the information's not being shared or even reviewed.
That's right, I think you were given exactly what everyone else was given.
And all they want is to sign off on it, that's it.
You ready for a roll call?
Yes, roll call, please.
Trustee Evans?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Pass two to one.
I move to designate the Licking County Prosecutor's Office as counsel for the three Ohio Court of Claims cases filed by Mark Evans, who cannot participate in this discussion on this motion nor vote on this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
That doesn't ask if you want to provide any information to the people.
Since you've collected the information.
Yeah, Mr. Evans has filed three actions in the Ohio Court of Claims against the township related to public records requests. I can give anybody more information about any of the individual claims that you might want. But this is a motion to designate the county prosecutor as counsel to the township so that the township does not incur outside legal fees in order to defend the actions that have been filed by trustee Evans.
And just for clarification, when they say that you can't vote, do I say his name so he abstains or do I just skip him?
Uh, he can sus- he can sustain or he can.
Do I say his name so he abstains or am I wrong?
He just, he can't, he can't vote, so I.
I think the part we think we need to do is abstain.
You can't speak, Mr. Evans, you can't speak.
He's just giving, he's just helping me with the procedure, he'd like to say his name so he can abstain, right? Are you ready for roll call?
Roll call, please.
Trustee Evans?
Abstain.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Okay, motion I passed two. Okay, thank you. We'll move over to the fiscal officer's report. I move resolution twenty-three oh nine.
You're three.
One eight zero three. To approve the purchase order as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second. Yeah, and I would ask again that these be provided in our packets, because Mr. Johnson doesn't have it and if you want to see. But they should be provided to us on our desk. I would request that.
The first time he's ever asked me to make sure Julie knows that.
Not really.
I I gotta do this stuff for Julie, Mr. Evans, he really doesn't. So I will ask Julie to make sure that she gets it to me, I'm giving it to the back, she's not a problem. And then Julie also asked to make sure you guys sign all of that and leave it with me so she can pick it up.
Okay.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Ready for a roll call.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Pass three to one. If you're down to the ratification.
I might, I might go back up to a motion that I have. Getting under, under motion to designate counsel, I should put it under there. We'll just go finish, I'll just go, then I'll go back up, okay? I move to ratify the payments for bills as shown as the payment listing, is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
I'm going to go back under the motion to designate counsel and left out a question. I have a motion here to authorize the president, myself, of the board of trustees to search for special outside counsel to conduct an investigation into a personal complaint. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Personnel complaint. It's a personnel, it's not on there, it's a personnel complaint. And it's under the motion to designate counsel for pending disputes, so I'm just reading off a motion.
But it doesn't have to do with.
This is a personnel, no, this is different.
Different, okay.
This is a personnel complaint that is filed against.
Do we have that in the point?
Typically, this goes in the executive session to discuss things.
Again, well, again, Mr. Evans, that's not true, this is coming from our counsel. And so we are discussing it right now. So first of all, we have to just give it a second, did you second it? Just a second, it's a word in discussion. Okay, and under our, under our, under our handbook, there's several, under fourteen point four point three complaint procedure. And then there's also four point five, a complaint procedure and four point five one, a procedure. And that's a procedure that this was filed under. So we are seeking outside counsel to investigate the complaint on a personal matter.
So it's internal to us?
It's internal, yes.
That's what I was trying to find out.
And it would be good to provide the board with information in in executive session where things could be discussed.
Is there, you already have a motion and a second.
Okay, so roll call.
Mark Evans?
Well, I don't know exactly what it's about, so I'll abstain.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Pass.
We'll move on over to announcements from the trustees or comments.
Yeah, I've got a couple there. Regarding the squishery zones, we keep hearing that the two hundred and fifty acre thing, there's no single parcel, two hundred and fifty acre. Numerous developments combining, combined parcels, so two hundred and fifty is just a red herring. There's plenty of acreage in this township that can accommodate the industrial, solar. So I think it does need to be addressed and keep in mind that the zoning commission is looking to ban the community solar, which is fifty to five totally. So it makes no sense to leave that in place and ban ban the middle section. We're not talking about solar on your rooftop or anything like that. Regarding the rusty door, getting close to that, everybody's pretty busy. You want to make sure that people are going to use proper materials, proper process to, so it's done right, so working on that. Regarding the special counsel, I'm guessing it's, it's, I mean, it's appropriate, it's Halloween and other witch hunt. There's been other special counsels set to investigate, nothing's come of it. This is just due to the pressure put on this leadership to do what's right and they're fighting back. It's it's sad. I could have filed countless complaints and I did not to try to try to limit some of the stuff. But regarding the court of claims, yes, I had to file three court of claims actions, chosen court of claims, so there's no damages fees, it's just forcing to do what's right. If you go to the other county police court, you could be awarded damages. Did not want to go that route, but it's important that we have transparency. We still have the box of missing keys that Mr. Johnson took out. Where are they? They won't say. Numerous things that are going wrong here and again, if if people want to investigate and do all this stuff, I I think they're really worried that people are catching on and hopefully, like I said, it's, everything will come to light one day. And it it's, it's, people talk about working together, but they just don't want to. They don't want to provide information. I've heard tonight numerous times, well, you you should have told us that I didn't get this stuff until the day before and not even most of the information on there. So it's the games that continue. So it's the games that continue to be played, and to renominate John Carlisle, people had said, quit talking about him before. He's gone, he's not gone. They brought him back, embraced him. It's, it's not broken.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I had a great conversation with Sarah Wallace, the board chair for Framework. The report indicates that Framework was a voluntary activity. They would be conducting a training session for all of us on Thursday, September twenty-first, in Newark, Ohio, at the downtown library. They will go over the report's footprints. After reading the report, it's like a toolkit or an adventure, it's your choice, as a township, or a city, or municipality, or a village. The, the framework started out at one, for one sixty-one and Route sixteen corridor. Hanover and Utica were not included in the final report, but like Etna Township, the residents were able to participate in the workshops without having to pay for it. We were not included in the five thousand dollar opportunity, but we all benefited from it. Example, we had several residents in the township, Marie, Shelley Marie been one, Mr. Burkholder been the other, participated, and myself, and amongst others. This would, um, be included in the comp plan, which we chose to invest in, which is the neighborhood strategies, cost us a little over sixty thousand dollars, so why spend the additional five thousand dollars? Mark, did you make a motion to participate in the, um, Framework as a trustee? No, you did not. Did you ask if we could, if it could be on the agenda? No, you did not. Did your unpaid consultant, Mr. Burkholder, ask you to join the Framework since he was on the comp plan? No, you did not. I don't recall ever having a motion to be, uh, part to join the Framework. I can say, I feel good that I saved the township five thousand dollars while being able to participate in the Framework LLC. We were focused on our own comp plan for the Etna Township, we invested in that with the neighborhood strategies. How did this affect the township? What did we lose? What did we gain? Our residents participated in the Framework for free. I will ask our executive secretary, Laura Brown, to email all residents that are on our mailing blast to send a link to the final report. The reason why I had the stance to, to, to talk about this, because I was out on social media, ethnic community, where Mark goes out there and spews his lies. I mentioned that I never get out there and I never say anything, but because he wanted to tell the residents that we did not participate in Framework was a bald-faced lie. He likes to stir lies, he likes to, that, that's what he does, he stirs, he stirs up lies, he's not honest, and I'm going, and this is why I'm sitting here today, speaking on this situation. I tried to defend it, but I was removed off the page because it was called hate speech.
I believe that's three minutes.
Um, because of that, I wanted the residents to know that we did participate, we are part of the Framework. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. Well, we're all fair.
And we're not part of Framework. The invitation went to Ms. Southgate.
All right.
Is there a motion?
Yeah. No, I, I wouldn't, this may or may not positive, but we had a very good meeting that Ms. Hanson set up for us with employees, had some food, had some class, learned some stuff about each other and different things. Um, our employees are exceptional in here, they work very hard every day, they're here. Um, it's, it's great to work with these people, and I'm glad they are our employees, and I'm glad that they are just being our township, as much as I do. Thank you. Make a motion, John.
A adjournment?
Adjournment.
I'll second. Roll call, please. Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Return to seven.
I'll go second.